Mr. McGough. Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Mr. Loscom. Mr. Joyce.
Here.
And Mrs. Evans here. Notice is hereby given that Scranton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 23, 2013, at 5:45 PM in Council Chambers, 2nd floor Municipal Building, 340 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of Council Number 11 of 2013, amending file of the Council Number 74, 1993, as amended, entitled "The Zoning Ordinance for the City of Scranton," by repealing Section 516, entitled[59.96][59.96]"Flood Prone Areas," and enacting Section 516, entitled "Flood Plane Management Regulations." We have no one who has signed the speaker's sheet. Is there anyone who would like to address council?
Members Council, Don King, I'm the city planner. The ordinance you have before you tonight is an amendment to our zoning ordinance that deals with the section on floodplain regulations. This came about from FEMA, asked us to update our regulations to stay current with their current federal regulations. There really isn't a whole lot of difference between the regulations themselves between what's in our ordinance now and what's in here, other than there's a lot more in the way of explanation, definitions, more specific regulations, but the core things are basically the same. Like I said, it's a requirement of theirs. The one change, we have a new flood zone, flood zone 899, which wasn't even thought of when our ordinance was passed in '93. So that's one of the reasons why we needed to update it also, and that's for the areas that are protected by the levees, which we didn't have, obviously, in '93, the last time we did our zoning ordinance. But other than that, basically, there's really not a lot of difference, just much more in the way of explanation.
We appreciate very much the fact that you attended this public hearing, Mr. King, and provided that explanation for council and the public.
You're more than welcome. Any other questions?
No. Thank you again.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Victorine.
What is it, I'm sorry?
My name is Victorine.
And your last name?
Bidwell.
Thank you.
This is my first time coming here, so I'm nervous. I am a person that goes to Scranton Counseling, you know, for our mental health.
If I could interrupt, I'm so sorry, Ms. Bidwell. This is not the regularly scheduled council meeting. This is a public hearing-
Oh, I didn't know that.
-on a specific change to the zoning ordinance only. So does your issue involve the zoning ordinance change?
It was like having, starting a community garden, you know, for like, you know, homeless, you know, food kitchens.
Okay, you know, if you can wait until we begin our regular meeting, which should be momentarily, then you can speak during the council meeting.
Okay, I am so sorry.
Oh, no, that's no problem at all, don't you worry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? This public hearing is adjourned. (inaudible) with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for all those who died in the last week, particularly Andrew S. Quinn, Esquire, beloved husband, son, father, brother of Monsignor Joseph G. Quinn, nephew, uncle, and great-uncle, Frances "Butiglieri" Butler Gervasi, loving wife, mother of our good friend Dave Gervasi, Scranton firefighter, and wife Karen, grandmother of our friends Bob Setta, Scranton firefighter, Maria Costanzo, Angela Duffy, and one of my favorite students, Alyssa, great-grandmother, sister, and aunt, all victims of the killer tornadoes in Moore, Oklahoma, and their dear families and friends who suffer their loss. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGough?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Loscom?
Here.
Mr. Joyce?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Dispense with the reading of the minutes, please.
Third Order, 3A, minutes of the composite pension board meeting held April 23, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluations received April 12 and April 17 of 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, audit status from Robert Rossi and Company, received May 16, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D, agenda for the City Planning Commission meeting held May 22, 2013.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do we have any clerk's notes tonight, Mrs. Crane?
No, Mrs. Evans.
Thank you. Do any council members have announcements at this time? The Lackawanna River Corridor Association will conduct its annual River Fest on Saturday, June 1, 2013, including a canoe-thon, kayak excursions, a regatta, and a duck-thon. For additional information, call 570-347-6311, or go to www.lrca.org. Don't miss this fun-filled family event. Finally, I wish to congratulate the winners of Tuesday's primary election, and recognize all the candidates who were willing to give their time and best efforts to the betterment of their communities. And that's it. And we'll go to Fourth Order, citizens' participation. Our first speaker tonight is Les Spindler.
Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer.
Evening.
Well, I started off by saying my thoughts and prayers go out to the Gervasi family and the loss of their dear mother. I just heard that Tuesday, and I felt so bad. My thoughts and prayers are with the whole family. I too want to congratulate all the winners on Tuesday, and maybe this'll be the start to turn our city around, hopefully, and I wish them all the best of luck. I don't know much else tonight, but the other day, I spoke to a high-level police official and told me a couple disturbing things. Last week, the one night, there was one police officer in all of Southside. That's how depleted our police force is right now. And this person told me if there was a domestic or a violent crime committed, this police officer would have been on his or her own until help arrived. And that's a darn shame. And this is all because of our mayor. He's depleted our police force, forced a lot of the good cops out of the city. For example, we have one, it's the police chief in Blakely now, there was a police officer here. Others went to the state police. And it's all because of Chris Doherty. They all wanted to stay here, but they were forced out. And hopefully, with a new mayor, that will change. And I feel safe and sound, I think Mr. Courtright will do that. But it's a darn shame where we have one police officer to cover one section of the city. And it's been like that in the past, it's been like that for years, and it's a darn shame. That's all I have to say right now, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Bidwell?
Yes?
If you would come up, please. Hello again.
Okay, I'm a patient with the Scranton Counseling. I wanted to suggest to the city that if there was a way possibly that the people here in Scranton could have a community garden, that they could either keep for themselves, that they could donate to churches, they could go to the farmer's market, or something like that. And where would be a good place that we could start something, and what do I need?
Well, I know that currently, there is a community garden in West Scranton. I think it's largely overseen by the West Scranton Neighborhood Crime Watch Organization. And from what I hear, it's been very successful. I think there may also be something similar in Southside, where I think they might coordinate with a very small farmer's market. So if you were interested in starting something like that in another portion of the city, another area, I should say.
Yeah, like here in the city?
I think what you would need to do is locate a city-owned, abandoned lot. And then, I think you would need to speak with the administration, specifically Mayor Doherty, once you've located the appropriate property. And again, it should be city-owned, not a property that, for example, it may be a vacant property, because a home may have been torn down previously, but it can still be owned by a bank or the original property owner. So you have to determine this carefully, that it is indeed a city-owned property.
Okay.
And then, as I said, speak with the mayor about your intentions, and I think if you have a group of people-
There is.
...with you, who are very interested in pursuing this, I think it can be done.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much.
That concludes our sign-in sheet. Do we have anyone else who cares to address council?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident. On 7A and B, did you get any kind of answer on our Sergeant Duffy monument?
Oh, no, we didn't, but I do have here a copy of the letter that was sent. I can give it to you.
Oh, no, I totally trust-
A letter was sent on May 17 to Mayor Doherty and Mr. Dewar regarding the Colonel Frank J. Duffy monument, and we haven't received a response yet, but that's not-
Is it Colonel Duffy, or-
Pardon?
Was it Colonel Duffy, or Sergeant Duffy? I'm not sure.
Well, according to the letter, it says Colonel Frank J. Duffy. Again, this was just sent last Friday. This week, of course, City Hall had a day off on primary election day, so we've not received a response yet.
Okay. Okay, the only concern there is if it gets passed tonight, then they don't have to answer audit for any negative things that may happen to it. I trust that it probably will be okay, it'll get moved, and even if they don't have the land there, they could put it up at Naught Park somewhere or something, but it should be preserved, and it's a huge bronze and granite monument, so it's probably cost you quite a pretty penny to, you know, replace it. And for the candidates, I've saved quite a few signs, so if anybody wants to see me at the end of the council, I could hand them back to you, or I have several. And on the food trucks, it's not on tonight, that I can see, but please, keep it at 100 feet, because anything more is just gonna make it to a point where it'll just be a constant argument, sore spot, so. One person will object, and the other person will counter-object, and it'll go back and forth for years. But, I mean, these people were left coming in here, and once you do that, you're kinda, the horse is out of the barn, so to speak, so you can limit it somewhat, but it's kind of not right to put a huge limitation on it. And a few weeks ago, Mrs. Evans, you mentioned about Scranton U fire alarms, and they were mostly cooking, where somebody cooked. I have a fire alarm very close to my kitchen stove, because that's probably where a fire would start, in most houses, and a lot of times, I have to unplug the battery in order to cook, but that's the safest place to have it. And I was wondering if full crews of firemen showed up to those alarms, where we possibly have rolling brownouts, and we have truck after truck after truck full of firemen showing up at these because this alarm went off? It's been a wonder of mine. Would Jack know that, maybe?
Yeah, Mr. Loscom, do you know the answer?
I'm sorry, I missed part of it.
I think during January and February, Janet mentioned at least a dozen false alarms or cooking fire, where you make too much smoke and the alarm sounds off. And they probably are all interconnected, so I was wondering if we didn't have full firefighting crews showing up.
In most cases, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And in some cases, there's arrangements where one company would respond.
Mm-hmm.
But it depends on the area.
I was wondering if we could possibly get something going where the university verifies, due to the fact that, and U pays a few dollars in pilot, other universities don't pay anything, and they have dormitories too, if they could get somebody to verify that it's an actual problem, or a fire started, as opposed to-
I believe they've tried that.
Yeah.
But the big factor is, if it is a real fire, there's a lot of valuable time lost.
Yeah, you don't want valuable time lost.
And that's a consideration. Seconds count.
Well, that's another good argument for fees, as opposed to taxes, you know? One more good argument. And, okay, I've kind of run out of things, it's an off-week, but the golden parrot goes to the people. Once again, my campaign signs were vandalized, and some were swiped. And, you know, it makes it that I have to scratch my head whether I want to support people that potentially took them. You know, if their man won, I have to sit and think about it now, you know? Because I'm thinking, am I helping the person that engaged in actually criminal activity? And it's only a misdemeanor, and so forth, but it's wrong, and it really teases me off. So whoever wanted to run as a candidate and slant the elections, and mess things up, and potentially put the election into the wrong hands of the wrong people, or people I couldn't do as good of a job as others, they get the "buck, buck, buck." Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Thank you.
I don't really have anything prepared, but I think it's gonna be a big loss to the city of Scranton.
Before you begin, I'm sorry, could you state your name?
Teresa Snyder.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be a big loss to the city of Scranton, Mayor Doherty, because he has a large family, and he can hit on areas of which not many people can do. He's both involved with the faith, and also the community in general. I think it'll be a big loss for us. I think that the incumbent, perhaps, will probably do a good job. But the thing of the matter is, is like, I've seen where Chris Doherty did a lot of good for the city of Scranton. I think it's gonna be a big loss. I think he took on a job of which most people would not really want to take on, because there was so much involved. Not only that, on the most personal and the most public level, but the thing is, is I think he conducted himself in the most professional way, okay? I think that he probably did as much as he possibly could, and like, as he concedes, or else perhaps he pursues, you never know. You never know what's gonna happen to the city of Scranton, that's one thing, you never know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The thing I have here today is that I'd like the council to pass only a budget that lasts long enough for the incumbents to take office in council and in the mayor's office, because we've listened to rhetoric, and this isn't a shot at anyone in general, but everybody's talking about not raising taxes, and not doing all these other things, and I just think that we should give them the opportunity to take these positions and do the things that they promised the taxpayers they were going to do. Now, I'm gonna say this, in regards to you, Mr. Joyce.
Yes.
You know, I may have not agreed with council at all times, but in your particular instance, I think that the budget problems in this city are so vast, and this isn't a shot at the rest of the council, that not one person is going to be able to manage pulling that budget apart and finding solutions. It's just not gonna happen. And I think that you, sir, took a lot of the heat for prior things that had happened in this city. Now, I don't know what all the numbers were, because I wasn't here locally when I only came, cast my vote, I haven't been in the city for a couple days, but I think that I was told you came short a little bit. I don't know, 100 or 200 votes, but I'm not sure if that's factual or not, either. But, you know, I have a lot of things I'd like to say about this prior election, because I think it's important for the residents someday to understand what's taking place, and I'd just like this council to really seriously consider just putting a budget together long enough for the next elected officials of this city to come in and do the things they campaigned on, because rhetoric is very simple, but reality sometimes is very hard. And at this time, I'm gonna reserve any comments on the election, but I just think that that's the proper thing to do, that's my opinion, and I just hope you'd really seriously consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I could comment on that?
Yes.
First of all, it'd be a violation of the Home Rule Charter in order for to pass such a budget. It couldn't be done legally, it'd be an illegal budget, and that would mean that the new council would have to come in, and the new mayor, and draft an amendment. I mean, I don't know if Mr. Morgan means just draft a budget for one week, or if he means draft a budget for an entire year, but then the new council could come in and make amendments to it. There's precedent for that. Judge Mizony ruled against council when it amended the budget, you know, the mayor's budget, I believe it was back in 2009. We spent, I think it was, two days of trial, submitted briefs, and Judge Mizony said that in his opinion, that council could not make any amendments to the budget. I did not agree with his opinion. I thought an appeal maybe should have been taken, but council decided not to take an appeal. Unfortunately, that's the law of Lackawanna County right now, and it'd be impossible, and it'd be an illegal budget, not to tell council, not even to consider it.
Thank you. And Ms. Schumacher?
Yes, Marie Schumacher, city resident and taxpayer.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank everybody who came out and voted, in general, and specifically those who came out and voted for me, for the county study commission. I appreciate each and every vote. Now, we're getting close to the half-year mark, and, Mr. Joyce, I'm wondering if you could get together with the new BA, and give us a status report as of the midterm, and where it looks as though we're gonna end. For instance, one of the things, I think we've given up on the police headquarters as a storage area for cars. I know money was included in the budget for that, so things of that nature. And then, moving down to the icebox, there was six, I know there's $600,000 in the budget for the icebox sale. And, you know, that extends far beyond just getting that $600,000. We're missing out on the property taxes, since that sale has not been consummated. And as a matter of fact, the turkey hill that was just built is now paying taxes only on the improvements, because there is a land lease. And that's just wrong. It's wrong for other turkey hills with whom they compete, and it's certainly wrong for those of us who manage to pay our taxes. I think that should be brought to the front burner, and I hope that perhaps Attorney Hughes can give a report tonight on where that recovery stands, because, as I say, it's important, not just for the $600,000, but to get that on off the lease. Then, I'd like to talk again about parking head removals. Mr. Loscom, you were absent last week, but I talked about having gone by the parking heads that were removed at Penn and Linden, and there were cars parked in each and every spot. And again, coming down Mulberry Street tonight, there was only one of those spots that you, they were very fast, oh, it's the university, very fast to get the parking heads off those, but I've gone by numerous times, and I just did the count tonight, and almost always, they are very close to completely filled. So I think whenever in the future, anybody wants to take a parking head away, I think we need to put the no-parking signs up at the same time, and in the case of Mulberry Street, they've got to paint over or strip off, I don't know however they are, those zigzag white lines, because all we've done is lost revenue, we're not, we haven't increased safety at all, as long as cars continue to park there, and we have to zigzag around. And then, talk about other revenues that I believe that we're missing. For instance, those Clay Avenue properties, Mrs. Evans, I believe you spoke to them last week. I'm a little disappointed in NRC. I know I promised to give information, but I knew I didn't have one property. I came into the, is it NRC or C- I came into the, is it NRC or C, the, the tax collector for the delinquent taxes, whatever their acronym is.
Northeast Revenue?
Yeah. Um, when I got the, the one for the one property, she noted to me that, oh, but we can't collect taxes on this because it's in bankruptcy. I mean, they're supposed to be professionals. I knew at that time that it had already been to court, and somebody else had the deed, and it was approved by a judge, and it was in, um, in lieu of, the deed was given in, in lieu of foreclosure. So there again, we're missing out. There again, the taxes, the back taxes weren't collected before, uh, before they, they were given building permits. There's a property in, in my neighborhood that sold for a pittance. I mean, you know, we've got the common level ratio that is what somewhere now about five times or, yeah, I guess it would be five times the, the appraised value is the market value. This person bought it for the appraised value, which is legal, but also got a permit, and none of the, the 2012 taxes aren't paid, the 2011 taxes aren't paid, the taxes for which, uh, the prior, uh, city taxes for which the prior property owner owed, that are all supposed to be, are allowed to be charged. And I don't think we are even going after those. There is more slipping through our fingers, and I have even more that I'll bring back next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Schumacher? If, I have, uh, something for you regarding the, the no parking signs. We do agree with you that they should be. So we have sent that letter and we're awaiting the response.
Okay, thank you. And I did look at my first of all, we're getting through my respirations, so I'm sorry.
And Mrs. Craig, could we send a memo to NRS, please, regarding those Clay Avenue properties? Because according to the documentation that we received, um, Ms. Schumacher is accurate in that it was sold or transferred from one company to another. So it is not in bankruptcy, and, well, apparently it's not. And I think they should probably be reviewing those properties for collection of the delinquent taxes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Scranton City Council.
Good evening.
Congratulations to the winners and condolences to the losers. Uh, the, the weather had nothing to do with the low voter turnout in Scranton. Appetite for politicians, along with disgust, was the true reason why so people came out and voted. It really is, from talking to people. They just saw no use in coming out. That's a shame, but that's the majority of the people state. That's why they didn't come out to vote on Tuesday. Uh, I'm going to read a letter to, to, to the editor that I wrote last week and that I was criticized for, from this podium. City being left in dire straits. My fear is that the people who are seeking the positions of mayor and city council members do not realize how bad off Mayor Chris Dougherty and the current Scranton City Council will leave the city financially. The city's payroll, retirement, and health insurance system must be reduced immediately. Otherwise, the city will not survive without another large tax increase, and that will not stop the bleeding. Wake up, Scranton, you're bankrupt, and nobody is, is rushing to your aid. If the city of Scranton filed for bankruptcy and a receiver was appointed, the residents will still have police fire and garbage pickup. It would not stop. The only people who would be stopped would be the seven elected officials of Scranton. That might actually be an improvement. The seven elected officials in the Pennsylvania Economy League are responsible for the mess I call Scranton insane government. I challenge any member of city council, the administration, Young Miller, or any other, or any other audience member to explain to the taxpayers what is not truthful or accurate in the above-mentioned statement. Young Miller attempted last week but failed. He was nothing more than a cheerleader for failed city government. According to the data from the American Bankruptcy Institute, there were 41 municipality bankruptcies, about eight per year between 2007 and 2011, which is on par with the average in the United States since 1980. Experts predict that underfunded pension liabilities and stagnant tax revenue could cause an increased number of municipal bankruptcies. Scranton is the latest Pennsylvania city in serious financial trouble. Not my words, the words of expert, experts, which I do not believe that Young Miller or anybody else on Scranton City Council qualifies as. All the bankrupt cities in the United States are required to provide police, fire, and garbage pickup. It's the law. Anybody who believes that all services would come to a halt because of bankruptcy, I have some swamp land for sale in Louisiana for a good price. Come see me after the meeting. Detroit, Michigan is a bankrupt city. They will have fire, police, DPW, Detroit Lions, Detroit Red Rings, Detroit Pistons, Pistons, and the Detroit Tigers. The community will continue to function with new leadership. I do not scare easy. Give me facts, not your novice opinions. Some cannot handle the truth, I can. Being a cheerleader is good at sporting events, but not at city government meetings when the city is bankrupt. My background, 20 years supervisory experience, making the hard decisions, including life or death decisions. Seven years as a senior enlisted hostage negotiator, strategic air command, two actual hostage situation. Also, five years experience as first sergeant for missile security squad and responsible for over 400 airmen. Nuclear storage security supervisor, South Korea, Philippines. Also, non-commissioned officer in charge, NCOIC, for security escort and camper teams assigned to guard and protect 150-minute man missile sites located within the state of North, North Dakota. Responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of 250 security specialists. U.S. Air Force, still working to support the warfighters, who defend and make sacrifices every day to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all foreign and domestic enemies, up to and including signing a contract that includes their life. I have sworn five oaths in my 34 years of service to my country and the citizens of the United States of America. Did I mention that I also had a temporary duty assignment to Presidential Security Support Squadron, providing security for the president and vice president of the United States of America? How many people in this room have had lunch or supper with the president, or vice president or secretary of defense? I have. So I do not intimidate very easily. So when people come up here, or elected officials say that we're not going to have fire or police or garbage because we're going to file bankruptcy, you're not convincing me. I don't believe it, because the other bankrupt cities in the United States have fire, police, and garbage collection. It's not going to happen.
Thank you.
If I could just respond to that quickly. Um, yes, in a sense, Mr. Jackowitz is correct. You'll still have some services, but not the ones you currently enjoy, because they would be cut in more than half. So for example, your weekly trash collection would very likely turn into a monthly trash collection. Your police department and your fire department would be decimated. I think many of the, um, cities to which Mr. Jackowitz refers are not Pennsylvania municipalities. In Pennsylvania, each, each state has different laws that govern municipal bankruptcy. And we've seen what has happened in Pennsylvania in its capital, Harrisburg, and those are facts. There's no disputing that. But in addition, I have a newspaper article of my own about Stockton, California, and it's, the title of it is "Walking for Redemption." After Stockton, California declared the largest municipal bankruptcy in the nation, its residents are fighting to stem a grim tide of violence. And it says, "Walking the streets in darkness, where every block brings with it a tale of desperation, Rosalind Burst seeks some redemption for this city. These are the streets on the south side of Stockton where strands of police tape linger on fence posts for days, like temporary grave markers. For the record, 70 people murdered this year. In these neighborhoods, living the fallout from the nation's largest municipal bankruptcy, residents say there are no longer enough cops to hunt the killers or services to curb the violence." And what they have had to do is form their own neighborhood police groups to guard their own neighborhoods and their own parks. And later in the article, it notes Neighborhood Watch. The Stockton Police Department said more than 100 Neighborhood Watch groups are active in the city now, more than at any time in Stockton, Stockton's history. Some stand guard over their local parks at night. And there's a picture of the citizens doing just that. So if anyone wants to tell you that bankruptcy was the answer for the city of Scranton, it's nothing more than their opinion. And certainly, you can take it or leave it. Is there anyone else who cares to address council?
Dave Francis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm just a little annoyed with Mr. Jackowitz coming up here every week, knocking this council down on the mayor. If it wasn't for you and the mayor getting together this year, I don't care how much everybody's saying you didn't get along, you did get along. If it wasn't for you not getting along, we would have like 129% tax increase. I can't wait till you're gone, and these same people come to this podium. Who are they going to blame then? They're probably going to blame you for the way the situation is in the present next year. They're going to blame it on you. I don't, I don't get it. They should be thanking you. If you went bankrupt, you fought to keep us out of bankruptcy. The taxes would be out of sight, people would be losing their homes if we filed bankruptcy. Where's the thanks for that? None. 22% tax increase, where's the thanks for that? None. Just constant criticism. Look at Frank Joyce, the financial wizard. Before he was the financial chair, we had Judith Gattelli. Every time they said, "Do you have any report this week?" No. Just breeze right by. We never knew anything. When all you, Mrs. Evans, during motions, we never knew anything that was going on in the city. When Kevin Murphy was president, there was, we never knew. This ordinance was passed, that ordinance was passed, number this, this, and this. But nobody knew what it was, because nobody objected, nobody questioned, nobody had anything on the question, it was just passed. Everything was passed for the mayor, because it was a council mayor. Nobody questioned anything, and the attorneys didn't, like Boyd Hughes does his research, and he explains everything. Takes forever sometimes, but he says everything, and the more he says, the, no, but Boyd, it takes a long time.
[inaudible]
No, but, but I love listening to you. It's like a book.
He does a very fine job.
Yes, he does.
Of explaining very complex issues to the average person.
Yeah. You've said in one week, but some solicitors don't say it in the whole year, but...
Or in four years.
Yes, but that's what I mean. You look forward to hearing from him, because he tells the people what's going on in the city, and we have never heard this before. And this is what this council and this solicitor, we've never had this before. And when every time there's a vote, it's always on the question, there's always good debates, and this one has this point. Never had that before. We never knew, people at home never knew what anybody was even voting on, because nobody explained anything. But they're going to miss it when all of you are gone, most of you are gone, and they're not going to know anything is going on. Because who knows with the, and they think that the council and the, and the mayor's going to get along? Well, we, well, we'll see about that one. We'll just see about that one. And we'll just see if the mayor gets along and, uh, gives the police and firemen everything they want. I mean, because mayor doesn't usually turn over all the money to the firemen and the police, usually, but we'll see. Uh, I just think that people really have to start understanding what you've done for them, and, and start appreciating it. But you'll be getting blamed next year too, I'm sure. I don't know what else to say, except people are going to be in a rude awakening once you're gone. And I know you're still going to be doing all the hard work you're doing, even till the day you, you're not running anymore, right up to January, which is good. I, I don't know how you could do it, considering you get no thanks. Wouldn't be me, but I give you credit and thank you for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Mrs. Craig?
Bye-bye, motions.
Councilman McGough, do you have any comments or motions tonight?
Thank you. Yes. Um, first, it was announced this past week that, uh, Ryan McGowan, the current business administrator, would be leaving his post. Um, Mr. McGowan assumed that post at a very difficult time for the city, and during his tenure as business administrator, um, worked very diligently to provide funding for budgets, um, and worked towards the formation and implementation of revised recovery plan. And I personally would like to thank him for his service to the city of Scranton. Um, secondly, uh, I know last week we received recommendations on the restaurants and food trucks, and I, I, and I know it was a busy week with the, with the election and all. Uh, just basic, two questions. Who is preparing the amendments for that legislation, and have we decided what those amendments would be?
Um, actually, I'm going to address that briefly under motions.
That would be fine, thank you. Um, a little bit more on the, the rental registration from last week, kind of a follow-up. Um, I contacted Attorney Keller, I happened, actually, I happened to run into him, um, here at City Hall during the past week, and I asked him about, um, whether landlords were required to pay a mercantile tax, and whether LIPS, through the rental registration through LIPS, should be sending names to the single tax office. His response to me was that anyone who operates seven or more rental units is required to pay a mercantile tax. That, and that those names should be sent to the single tax office so that that tax could be collected. He asked me if I would have Mrs. Craig forward a letter to him requesting that he would send a letter to LIPS directing them to, um, notify the single, or to, you know, directing them to notify the single tax office of any, um, people that, um, fit that category. And actually, his recommendation was that rental registration or LIPS should probably send the names of all landlords to the single tax office, let them contact the landlords, and then the landlords could kind of determine whether they should be paying the mercantile tax, you know, that, um, they would then, um, respond to the single tax office. So, um, that's in the process. Uh, and, uh, hopefully that, you know, it, it's just another small facet of what the rental registration, you know, should be able to do. And hopefully, uh, you know, whether, I don't know that it will realize a great deal of revenue, but at least, uh, it's another step towards an implementation of the rental registration ordinance and, um, you know, making it a workable, um, workable law.
Well, I think it's a very fine addition, and thank you very much.
Um, no prob, uh, also, um, maybe a little bit of a status update from, or from Pell, from the meetings with Pell. Um, number of, maybe two weeks ago, I asked, uh, Mr. Cross if they could, if he would provide sort of a status update from their perspective on the recovery plan, and, uh, that was, uh, he said that, yes, they were in the process of preparing that, and that it would be sent to the clerk's office. I don't know that we've received that. Uh, as, as of Monday, we, you know, we had an, and, uh, but that should be, that should be received relatively soon, at least we're told it would be. And one of the, one of the things that, um, has been mentioned at the, the Pell meetings has doing with, or has to do with the, uh, the commuter tax, and whether the city would be appealing to the courts again... the courts again for commuter tax in 2014. And that this status update would be kind of a step toward, toward that process so that we could see where we are on the, you know, the budget, the recovery plan and so on. And it may be a step towards that appeal or appealing to the courts again. So again, I'm not sure where the administration is or what their plans are for looking at the commuter tax. But Pell is preparing also to move forward if in fact the city is going to apply or appeal for the commuter tax in 2014. And last thing that I have, this evening, it was a gentleman here from University of Scranton inquiring about legislation that was sent, dealing with the University of Scranton and Harb. And I was just wondering if there was a, if that, if there was in fact legislation and if that was going to be on an agenda.
Yes, we'll have it placed on next week.
Next week? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Councilman Rogan?
Yes, thank you. Very briefly, I would just like to thank the voters of Scranton for their confidence in me and the election that just passed. And I'd also like to congratulate everyone who ran. Running for office is very difficult, very time-consuming, and it's worthwhile though. And I would also like to thank everyone who came out to vote, and hopefully voter turnout will increase for the general election. Just two items tonight, two motions. I'd make a motion to amend item 7A per the following. In the summary title after "Bridge," insert "And Upon Receipt," the $21,400 shall be allocated for construction and paving in the 2013 operating budget, line item 01.080.00083.4340. And in the "Now Therefore" clause, following "Project," insert "And Upon Receipt," the $21,400 shall be allocated to construction paving in the 2013 operating budget, line
We have a motion? Thank you. Anyone on the question?
Yes, these were just on the items I believe we discussed last week regarding the money the city is receiving from PennDOT, from the sale of the land near the Harrison Avenue Bridge project. I brought up possibility of putting it towards road paving, and everyone seemed to jump at the idea. We certainly agree that roads need to be paved in the city. And just a small amount of money, but it's a step in the right direction.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
I'd make a motion to amend item 7B per the following. In the summary title after $7,000, insert "And Upon Receipt," the $7,000 shall be allocated to construction paving in the 2013 operating budget, line item 01.080.00083.4340. And in the "Now Therefore" clause, following $7,000, insert "And Upon Receipt," the $7,000 shall be allocated to construction/paving in the 2013 operating budget, line item 01.080.00083.4340.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On the question. I'd like to thank Attorney Hughes and our office for drafting these amendments to tonight's legislation.
Absolutely.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Lascom, do you have comments or motions tonight?
Yes, just briefly. I too would like to congratulate the candidates who were victorious in this election and also congratulate those candidates who ran. And at this point, we're not victorious, but I hope they would continue to be civically active and work towards their goals of helping the city, the county, the school district or whatever. And, you know, just keep going. I would like to thank the voters who came out on Election Day. Although it wasn't a great turnout, there's a number of factors. Appetite could be one. You know, possibly, possibly I think the ballot may have scared a lot of the elderly people, you know, intimidating the fact that they, you know, they weren't sure what they were supposed to do or sign or when it was told it was two pages. Those are just my guesses. But I would hope to see more voters turn out and get interested in the elections in the future. Again, I don't know what the answer is, but hopefully it will work out. But I'm looking forward to working with my new colleagues here. I will also miss my colleagues who will be leaving here at the end of this year. But I would hope that they would continue to be in contact with me and continue to mentor me as they have too. But that's, that's where I feel. So I would hope we can, you know, continue with your ideas also. Mr. McGough mentioned Mr. McGowan. I too would like to wish Mr. McGowan good luck on his new position. He did come in here, you know, in a time of great financial strife. And, you know, whether you like a person or not, I really appreciate the work he has done. I had the opportunity during the negotiations on the Supreme Court ruling to spend day after day working with Mr. McGowan and other members of the administration to work with the police and fire and sort of, you know, soften the blow to the citizens on that Supreme Court ruling. And I know they had worked tirelessly. I had also been meeting with him at that time when we were in jeopardy of losing our Blue Cross and Blue Shield coverage. And I was with him many times and we had conference calls and all. And probably the one that has spent the most time working with Mr. McGowan is my colleague, Mr. Joyce, being the finance chairman. So I know, just in my experience, working with Mr. McGowan, that he did work tirelessly. And I wish him good luck in the future. And, you know, hopefully everything will work out for him in that aspect. And lastly, I was just curious about something I read in the paper this past week about a meter program, Pango or something, they're supposed to, it was just a blurb. I don't think anybody on council knew anything about that.
No, I wasn't aware.
But ironically, in this morning's paper, which I believe is related to it, I see this big ad, and we all know these ads aren't cheap, it says, "Next time you look for change, look for a change. Smart Parking is coming to Scranton launching May 28th. Stay tuned." I mean, this is, I don't know anything about this.
I don't know anything either, but from, I didn't see today's newspaper article, but from the, or the advertisement, but from the previous article, it appears that this program is separate from the others, that it's yet like a third branch of the parking meter program. We're looking for a company to manage the program, then working with the manager would be a company providing the upgrades to the parking meters. And now, this seems to be someone else entirely.
Sure. It's becoming far more convoluted than we originally anticipated. We originally anticipated a company coming in, saving us money, showing us in real time the money that was coming in, and it just doesn't seem to be happening. But I don't know why we're out of the loop, why this is being done unilaterally without any consultation. I believe it was us that brought it to the forefront a couple of years ago about getting a meter system in here. That was part of the Parking Authority. They were notified years ago and kept ignoring it until they got themselves in such a spot that we had no choice but to let them. But it just seems like it's the same old, same old. And for some odd reason, one of the companies, StreetSmart, does the same thing. I mean, who is making these decisions to say, I believe the meters are still the city's?
Yes.
Not in the hands of the parking garages. Who's making these decisions to let these people come in? And it just seems like they're trying to do an end around over the first company we brought here, StreetSmart, which I don't care what company would run it, but let's do it right. Let's not be taking care of five different hands here. This is why we're in the position we're in. But this is continuous. And hopefully, January 1st, this kind of nonsense stops. But it just upsets me when I, when I, we're part of this project and we hear nothing about it. We read about it in the paper. And this stuff has got to stop. Hopefully, whoever takes office in January will be a little more amenable to dialogue. You know, we talk about communication with the administration and all that. Yes, there's times when we've had to work together, we do have communication. But it goes both ways. You know, they should let us know what their intents are. And that's what upsets me. And, you know, in a way, I'm happy there's going to be a change in January. I'm just optimistic, hopefully, I'm optimistic that the change is going to be for the better of everybody. But we need the transparency. And it just seems that this whole parking debacle is being all arranged to avoid the transparency that we're looking for. And unfortunately, we had a speaker, I was absent last week, but two weeks ago, the gentleman came to the podium and he said, "What are you there for? What is city council there for?" You know? It was going through my mind because I ask myself the same questions time after time. What are we here for? The office downstairs continually thumbs their nose at us up here. They only use us when they need us. And I know my colleagues have worked hard with the administration to get us to a certain point here where we can survive. But you know, it's tough. When we work hard, we take two steps forward and they kick us a step backward. This has been the MO for the time I've been on council here. And again, I would direct that whoever the next mayor is, and I stated it before, you don't need a city council that's always agreeable to the mayor, you don't need one that's always at odds with the mayor. We're checks and balances. And I believe we're going to continue that role, no matter who's in there. We may disagree on things, we may agree on things. But it's, I believe, we're working for the best interest of everybody. But when you unilaterally come out with things without our, at least a conversation with anyone here, you're not working for the people of this city. Now there's four or five hands in this pot here. Let's, come on, Mayor, let's get straightened out here. I'm a bit disappointed that this stuff is continuing. And again, like I said, I wonder sometimes what our purpose is here. Under this administration, we have to get a little bit, little bit stronger. And I know, I mean, I'm not saying any, I believe more than anything that our president here has strived very hard to work cooperatively and to bring out issues that have been pushed aside, that should have been brought to the forefront. And, you know, I hope we can continue that without Mrs. Evans here. But I know I will. I will pursue the issues at that point. But, you know, times and things have to change. If we want cooperation, we have to cooperate all the way around. We don't have to cooperate just when, when he needs it or whoever is there needs it. And, you know, I know I ramble on, but that's my feelings. And when I saw this ad this morning, I'm curious as to who paid for this ad because we all know how much an ad that size costs, and it's not cheap. There's no, no number here, but there's no other, there's no other ...
There's no identification.
Yeah, there's no identification on who it is, but it does address Smart Parking Coming to Scranton on May 28th. I have no clue, other than what I read in the paper the other day, what's going on here. So I don't know if we have any, I mean, do we have any say on what's happening with our meters? Shouldn't it have been presented to us for approval anyway? I mean, it's our liability too.
At this point, I can tell you that our solicitor has been meeting with the administration. I believe they met just today regarding the selection of a parking meter management firm. And I think, you know, obviously, the bids came in and the administration reviewed the bids, but still had questions concerning some of the proposals. And I think there was a phone conference conducted today with some of the, some of the bidders to obtain answers to questions that the city had. So we do have, I think, an experienced authority representing us in these, in this review and these negotiations in our council solicitor.
Sure. And again, I appreciate that definitely because I know, and I haven't had the time, I apologize, to really, I mean, I've reviewed the things and I do still have some questions, but I, you know, due to a work schedule that's been crazy, I haven't had the opportunity to really sit down with the administration at this point. So I do appreciate Mr. Hughes working on that. But at the same token, I believe IPS was awarded the contract to do the free program, the 90-day thing, which never came to fruition. This is a totally different company, according to the paper the other day. So I'm just curious as to, you know, who's making the decisions, who's paying for these ads, and, you know, why it hasn't been a little bit more open and transparent. Because I do believe there's companies out there that bid that would be transparent. And I do believe there's companies out there that bid that would work with whoever awarded them the bid and keep things quiet because that's the way things have been around here for years. And that's very disappointing. So I'll be watching it carefully and I'll be making my decisions, which may not even be, impact the situation anyway, down the road. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Joyce, do you have any comments or motions?
Yes, very briefly tonight. I'd like to begin by thanking all of the voters who came out and applaud them for doing their civic duty. I'd also like to thank, I'd also like to congratulate the winners of the primary election for the Democratic and Republican nominations, even though some of those aren't decided yet. And I'd like to thank, again, the people that came out to vote and for the time that they spent out of their days choosing the elected officials they think would be best to serve the city of Scranton and also Lackawanna County. A few matters of business. Mrs. Schumacher mentioned that I get together with the new business administrator to discuss where the city is financially, being that we're nearing the halfway point of the year. And I would be glad to do that. And there are some issues that need to be brought up, such as the ice box and such as the towing and storage yard replacement. Speaking of the business administrator, as we all know, Mr. McGowan will be moving on to a new position. I'd like to thank him for his service. I know that he did work tirelessly on a number of issues. And I know that the office, the BA's office, is rather strained and a lot of times, he put in a lot of extra effort and a scramble to get things done. And I wish him nothing but the best in his new endeavor. And I will be glad to work with Ms. Gina McAndrew for the remainder of my term. While we're on the issue of the business administrator's office, just to give an update of where the city is financially, currently, we have $12.7 million in the bank and $205,000 in accounts payable. in accounts payable. A few weeks ago, I addressed some issues with ATV complaints that we received over on Dorothy Street and Parker Street. And we received a response back from Chief Graziano. And he states, "In regard to the complaints received regarding ATVs on Dorothy Street and Parker Street, the Patrol Division captain has been advised to have the patrol officers and the beat patrolmen monitor these locations for violations." So I'm sure that the residents living in those areas will be pleased. Also, we've received a notification that bids will be opened up on Wednesday, May 29th for seasonal chemicals for swimming pools for the calendar year 2013. So once someone is selected, I'll further update on that matter. And for the residents who use the West Scranton Skate Park and also for the West Scranton High Park Neighborhood Watch, I'd like to announce that bids were opened on Friday, May 17th, in City Council chambers for the installation of a new fence for the Jackson Street Skate Park, which is sorely needed. And there are three bidders. And once we receive progress on this issue, I'll further update everyone as well. And that's it.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be very brief tonight. The three ordinances related to the food trucks are not included in tonight's agenda. On Monday, I discussed the legislation with the mayor, who wished to review the recommendations submitted by Ms. Collins and work with council on the final draft. The legislation for use of OECD re-refunds to operate two additional neighborhood pools this summer was not yet submitted to council's office by the administration. It should be forthcoming soon. Finally, I was of the understanding that the city would be signing a contract with a company for the MBRO program this week. However, I've not received firm confirmation of that issue. The following companies bid on the installation of a new fence for the Jackson Street Skate Park, Promax Fence System Incorporated, Abel Fence, and Rotkowsky Fencing Incorporated. DPW Director Mark Dewar is in the process of selecting the lowest responsible bidder. And thereafter, a contract will be awarded and the work should begin. I'm pleased to have supported this project, together with the mayor, for the children and youth of West Scranton. And finally, just a quick addition for Councilman McGough. I believe that it would be the Law Department that would be drafting the amendments to the food truck ordinances with the input of our solicitor.
I didn't know if anyone on council wanted to have any input on the recommendations before they went to Law Department. And also, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to contact Attorney Kelly and maybe sit down with him and discuss what we've talked about before he would frame those amendments.
Yes. And also, though, I would say.
And then, yes, also with Attorney Hughes.
Yes, I would keep our solicitor in that loop, because he, I think, would be working on what council would like to see in those amendments. But I think by and large, most council members intend to follow most of the recommendations provided by the businesses themselves.
You know, I kind of feel like Ben Hur here, with only, instead of having four horses, there's five. And I think that that comment is good. I think that all council members should be involved in having comment on this. I know the other night, Mrs. Evans and I discussed something and we were discussing this legislation. And one thing that came up that I really do not believe is addressed, and I did mention it to Solicitor Kelly today, is the fact that now that it's summertime and I hear the ice cream trucks going all around the neighborhoods, one thing that I think there should be an exception in this legislation for, at least, for ice cream trucks that move constantly and aren't in one position, that's not addressed. I mean, I think they should pay a license, I think they should be inspected. I don't know if they currently are. But to operate within the city, I think there should be uniformity there and that should happen. However, they're extremely mobile. I mean, most of these food trucks and food carts, they're in one spot and stay there. And I think that there should be an exception for the ice cream truck. That's just one thing that I did mention today. I think that's an entirely different situation. And as I said at the last meeting, the one problem with this was, was that this ordinance was, when it was adopted, I don't remember when or know when, was made for the people to sell novelties at parades. And then everything was just grafted onto it for food carts with the same hours and everything else. And I think that it has to be specifically tailored to these different types of businesses. I mean, you take it, I don't know how many people know about it, but, you know, what the fork, my wife told me, she saw it on TV in the morning before she went to work, that, you know, they're in competition now to be one of the top 10 food trucks in the United States, they're in a competition. I believe it's the same with the fork, I mean, that's what she told me. But they, I mean, this is, you know, the quality of what it is, how they got in it, I don't know anything about it. I've never eaten at it or anything, I've never, I think I've seen it, but, you know, I mean, that's the type of thing that we're dealing with here. But I think everybody's input would be welcomed. You know, take a look at what the chamber did, you know, with, you know, Leslie Collins did with, you know, on behalf of the chamber, you know, in getting the food vendors and the, and the restaurants together. And give me your comments. And I think that, you know, we should, we've come a long way from the piece of legislation that was submitted, you know, by the, you know, by the solicitor's office that prohibited food trucks within 500 feet of any business that pays a mercantile tax. I think we've come a long way, but I think the best thing is that we have, that we have a unified effort and have one piece of legislation will come down that doesn't have to be amended. So I appreciate everybody's comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Craig?
Fifth order, no business at this time. Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A. For consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file of council number 27, 2013, as amended. Authorizing and approving the right-of-way acquisition of a portion of city-owned property located on the 100 block of Harrison Avenue, 8,711 square feet in the city of Scranton, to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, as per PennDOT's offer to purchase and summary of just compensation, and to authorize the mayor and other appropriate city officials to enter into an agreement of sale to purchase said property for the sum of $21,400 for the purpose of removing the Harrison Avenue Bridge and replacing the Harrison Avenue Bridge.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Works?
I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please. Mr. McGough?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Loscom?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A as amended, legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file of council number 28, 2013, as amended. Transferring a temporary construction agreement of city-owned property located in the 100 block of Harrison Avenue to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, PennDOT, for the construction of removal of the Harrison Avenue Bridge and installation of a newly constructed Harrison Avenue Bridge for the sum of $7,000. And upon receipt, the $7,000 shall be allocated to construction paving in the 2013 operating budget line item 01.080.00083.4340.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Works?
I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please. Mr. McGough?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Loscom?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B as amended, legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, file of council number 11, 2013, previously tabled. Amending file of the council number 74, 1993, as amended, entitled The Zoning Ordinance for the City of Scranton by repealing section 516 entitled Flood Prone Areas and enacting section 516 entitled Flood Plane Management Regulations.
As Chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please. Mr. McGough?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Loscom?
Yes.
Mr. Joyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Mrs. Evans, before we adjourn, I forgot one thing.
Sure.
Very quickly. A property at 1006, I think it's 1006 Music Street, vacant property that we've been asked about for years. This past week, Pat Hinton and the South Side Cleanup Project or group cleared that. Mr. Spindler, part of the group, clearing that property. And I would just like to thank them for doing that.
Yes, thank you very much for that information. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.